Good evening. This 23rd meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being in a virtual meeting, please note that I will recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and then begin to speak. This evening's invocation will be given by Bishop Lisa Weha of New Bethlehem Baptist Church. Bishop Weha, thank you for joining us. The floor is yours. Is the bishop here? And looking, I'm missing the bishop. And Councilman Glover needs to be elevated. So what we're going to do is just have a quick minute. Matt, unless you want us to wait a minute, we can just have a quick, brief moment of silent prayer. We'll have one minute of a moment of silence. Thank you. Now we will have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening showcase Baltimore presentation will be given by Sarah Fawcett of Aziza PE and CE, often referred to as just AP. This organization uses the arts, fashion, fitness, music, and mentoring to help girls, gender expansive, and LGBTQ youth address mental health and personal development challenges. Sharon, are you here?
Madam Vice President, you're muted right now.
Thank you. We're going to move on. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
Vice President Middleton, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Madam Vice President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal. Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing none, the journal is adopted. Communication from the mayor can be found beginning on page two of the agenda. We now turn to executive nominations. The clerk will read the first nomination.
EA 21-0071 Ramsey Harris, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA 21-0072 C Matthew Hill, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA 21-0073 Harry Mayo, Member Licensing for Towing Services Board.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA 21-0074 Catherine Stokes, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. We will now move to bills being introduced for first reading. Clerk, please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 21-0182 Sale of Property 900 through 912 Baltic Avenue for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain property located at 900 through 912 Baltic Avenue, Block 7271 Lot 001, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0183 WSS Hanover Street for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and the city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain property that is located at WSS Hanover Street, known as 1996 South Hanover Street, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0184 Sale of Property 606 South Anne Street for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and the city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain property that is located at 606 South Anne Street, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is Councilmember Cohen.
Councilman Cohen, would you like...
Yes, ma'am.
Might I could say a few words about your bill?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President. The library, as it is, as it once was, unfortunately, has fallen under hard times. The building itself has been in disrepair for quite a while and has created a real community eyesore and is essentially blight in the middle of Fell's Point. The community is incredibly adamant that we have got to do better with this space. That's why DHCD has been working with all of the different residence associations and business groups to develop a plan. We have begun to contract, and this will enable us to sell the building to an architect and developer who is local, lives in the neighborhood, and has a great interest in Fell's Point and its continued well-being. What I'm excited about here is that he is committed to maintaining public space, both in and outside of the building, and that community will continue to have a real role in this former library. So again, thank you, Madam Vice President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. This bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0185 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit to Eight Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 2044 Wallbrook Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to eight dwelling units in the R8 zoning district of the property known as 2044 Wallbrook Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, gross floor area per unit type, and off-street parking requirements. Sponsor is Councilmember Torrance.
Councilmember Torrance, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The residents of the community, as well as community association, have all agreed to this conversion, especially the adjoining actual row homes, as well as the entire block and the community vote of on us. So with that, I'd ask them to stay by.
Thank you. This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0186 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R7 Zoning District, Variance 1635 Gwynn's Falls Parkway for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R7 zoning district on the property known as 1635 Gwynn's Falls Parkway as outlined and read on the accompanying plat and granting a variance from certain bulk regulations. Sponsor is Councilmember Torrance.
Councilmember Torrance, would you like to speak?
Similar to the previous legislation, the community, the adjoining neighbors, as well as the block and the community association have all agreed and accept this conversion.
Thank you. This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee. We will now move to resolutions being introduced for first reader readings. Clerk, please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution 21-0083R Investigative Hearing Baltimore City Sheriff's Office Eviction Procedures for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the Department of Housing and Community Development, concerned citizens, and other interested parties to appear before the city council to inform the council about the current procedure followed by the sheriff's office during the eviction process, any recurring problems that need to be addressed, any improvements that can be made to facilitate communication of the sheriff's office ability to appear at a residence on designated day and time, and any efforts to improve general eviction procedures. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Bullock, and Porter.
Do we have any other sponsors? Please add Vice President Middleton to this bill as well.
Cohen as well, please.
And I see Councilman Torrance, Councilman Cohen, and that's it.
Ramos.
I'm sorry. Oh, and Councilwoman Ramos. Anyone else? Councilwoman Burnett, you're on.
And Dorsey.
Oh, add Councilman Dorsey.
And Glover.
And Councilman Glover. Anyone else? Councilwoman Burnett, it's yours.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and to all of the co-sponsors. So the intent of this bill is to speak with the sheriff's department and a few other agencies that we will be reaching out to ahead of the hearing to talk about the eviction procedures, how they go about it, how they communicate with residents, with tenants, with property owners. Additionally, resources are made available ahead of time to prevent eviction. I know that last term, we passed legislation in which the sheriff's department agreed to include a list of resources when posting information on evictions. And so just trying to make sure that as we continue to move through this pandemic and more and more people are feeling the impact, the economic impact and hardships that the pandemic has created, that we are ensuring that the procedures that take place can help prevent evictions and/or that prevent harm to folks who may be going through hard times. Additionally, we've had some questions that were raised about process from folks that have assisted us with dealing with squatters. We had a situation in which a person had hired a locksmith to help change the locks once the squatter, a person that was squatting in the property illegally, left. But then the sheriff didn't show up, didn't communicate that. So the person that was on fixed income had to still pay the locksmith for their time. And apparently, this is a common occurrence in which there may be some communication gaps. So it's a pretty complicated issue, and I'm hoping that we can discuss all aspects of, and I think sort of also just fits in alignment with what this council has been trying to do, which is prevent eviction from happening in the first place and making sure that renters have everything they need to stay in their homes as we, especially as we go into the winter months. So again, thank you, Madam Vice President, for the time to be able to speak, and thanks to all the co-sponsors for this bill. Looking forward to a good discussion in committee.
Thank you. This resolution has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Resolution 21-0084R Informational Hearing Implementation of the Water for All Program and the Water Accountability and Equity Act for the purpose of requesting representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Department of Finance, and the Office of the Baltimore City Administrator to inform the Baltimore City Council on the implementation of the Water for All Discount Program and the Water Accountability and Equity Act. Sponsors are Councilmember Ramos, Bullock, and Porter.
And please add Middleton to this bill. Are there any other takers? I see Burnett. And Councilwoman Ramos, you're on.
Cohen too, please.
And add Councilman Cohen.
And Glover.
And Glover. Any other takers?
Torrance.
Torrance. Councilwoman Ramos, you're on.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice President, and thank you, colleagues. This resolution comes out of the other hearings that we've been having about our water billing issues. The Water Accountability and Equity Act was passed by the previous council. And then there was an amendment to it that was passed by the previous council, and it has not been implemented quite yet. Some parts of it have, some haven't. And this hearing will give the DPW, Department of Public Works, a chance to give us the full scale of what's happening with implementation. And I'm particularly concerned about the Water for All Program. No new applications have been added to the current BH2O program, which gives us, you know, the water discounts currently. And so there have been some people that have not been able to get discounts. So hopefully, we'll be able to get this up and running in the next couple of months. And this is a time, this will be a hearing to get all of those details, including the dispute resolution pieces and then enrollment goals, which were in the Water Accountability and Equity Act. So I'm looking forward to the hearing, and thank you, Madam Vice President and colleagues.
Thank you. This bill has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
So moved by Conway?
Well, well, second.
Yeah, I think it's moved by Burnett. I'll second it.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought that was your voice. Okay, moved by Burnett, seconded by Conway. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. And... Is Councilman Costello on with us?
He is, yes.
Okay. I don't think his audio is connected. Could I have someone ask for short titles for remainder of the meeting?
Madam Vice President.
Conway?
I move, we move to short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We will now move to short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Council Bill 21-0122 Franchise Installation of Five Utility Duckings.
I move the bill favorable. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The bill is approved and will be printed for third reader.
Council Bill 21-0123 Franchise Underground Conduit and Fiber Optic Cable.
This bill was heard on November 16th, as well as the previous bill. The committee approved a technical amendment to correct a number used to identify the developer's agreement. I move the amendment.
Second.
Conway?
Yep.
Second. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
Seconded.
I move the amendments.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Madam President, I believe we need to vote on the amendments and then the bill after voting on the amendments.
That's right.
All those opposed, say aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
All those opposed, say nay. The bill is approved as amended? Did I do that right?
Point of order, Madam Vice President. We have to move the amendments first, and then we'll move the bill.
That's correct.
So the committee, we approve the technical amendment to correct the number used to identify developer's agreement. So I move the amendments.
Second. And now we got, we have to go.
Full vote.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The amendments are adopted. Okay. I move the bill favorable as amendment. Is there a second? All those in favor of approving the...
Madam Chair, didn't Councilwoman Porter have a floor amendment? No, that's, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's not on this. That's not on this.
Yes, ma'am. It's for 21-0083, not this bill, Councilwoman. Yep, thank you.
My apologies. Thank you. Sorry.
So back to this. So I move the bill favorable as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The bill is approved as amended. Yay! Okay, the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. And that's Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the resolution on Wednesday, November 17th. And actually, I'm sorry, I don't even think that Nikki said the short title. I apologize, Madam Clerk. No problem.
She did not. Go ahead.
Council Resolution 21-0069R Investigative Hearing Wellbeing of the Transgender Community in Baltimore.
Thank you for recognizing that, Chairwoman McCray.
Okay, and thank you, Madam Vice President. So just again, the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee, we did hold a hearing on the resolution on Wednesday, November 17th, and I move the resolution favorable.
Second.
And...
Second by Conway.
All those, I'm sorry. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the resolution is adopted. Moving on to Rules and Oversight. Chairman Schleifer. Oops, we got to read the bill first.
EA 21-0062 Alice Kennedy Commissioner, Department of Housing and Community Development.
Chairman Schleifer, you're on.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee has been very active since our last meeting. We held meetings on November 18th and December 2nd, and we'll be bringing eight executive appointments, all favorable. So I'd like to move this nominee favorable.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the nomination, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The nomination is approved.
EA 21-0063 Dr. Yvonne Bronner, Member Commission on Aging and Retirement Education.
I recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Move this nominee favorable.
Is there a second? Second by, is that Conway?
Yes.
All those in favor of approving the nomination, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the nomination is approved.
EA 21-0064 Odessa Dorkins, Member Commission on the Aging and Retirement Education.
I recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Move this nominee favorable.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the nomination, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The nomination is approved.
EA 21-0065 Claudia Balog, Member Commission on Aging and Retirement Education.
I recognize Chairman Schleifer.
To move this nominee favorable.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the nomination, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The nomination is approved. I recognize Chairman Schleifer. Whoops, you got to read it again. I'm joking.
EA 21-0066 Otis W. Friedman, Member Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
I recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Move this nominee favorable.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the nomination, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Aye.
The nomination is approved. I recognize, whoops, you got to read it again.
EA 21-0067 Thomas Akris, Member Board of Licensing for Towing Services.
I recognize Chairman Schleifer.
To move this nominee favorable.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the nomination, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the nomination is approved.
EA 21-0068 Jason Bagu, Member Mayor's Commission on Disabilities.
I recognize Chairman Schleifer.
The nomination favorable.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the nomination, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the nomination is approved. I recognize Chairman Schleifer.
EA 21-0069 Gary Crum, Member Commission on Sustainability.
I recognize Chairman Schleifer.
To move the nomination favorable.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the nomination, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The nomination is approved. We turn now to bills on third reader for final passage. The clerk will read the bill and call the roll.
21-0083 Franchise Gas Regulator Station Utility at Lower Gwynn's Falls Park.
And I recognize Councilwoman Porter to introduce an amendment. Councilwoman Porter, are you there?
Yes, I am. I'm so sorry, Madam Chair. I'm having some technical difficulties. Earlier, I'm sorry, earlier today, I sent around a floor amendment to my colleagues to put the fee assessment at zero. So I'm hoping that you all support this particular amendment. If you have any questions, we can talk about it now. Madam Chair, I moved this floor amendment. I believe this floor amendment for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the amendment is approved. Per City Council Rule 12-3B, this bill will be held over and be back up for final passage at our meeting on Thursday.
21-0109 City Property Renaming Calverton Elementary Middle School to Katherine Johnson Global Academy. Vice President Middleton, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved.
Madam Vice President, point of order. We didn't vote on 0083. We just voted on the amendment.
It's going to be held. We voted in earlier, in second reader, right? Okay. So because of Rule 12-3B, that's why it gets held over. And then it's going to be, you know...
Because of the amendment, it has to be held for another meeting.
Yes.
Got it.
During third, when an amendment is put in during third reading, we have... we have to do it that way.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying.
Sure, no problem. So, we were, so 21-0109 has been approved, correct? Okay.
That's correct, yep.
Now, we're on 21-0154.
21-0154, sale of property, 1201 North Rosedale Street. Vice President Middleton, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
This bill is approved.
21-0167, high-performance market rate rental housing tax credit, citywide application extension. Vice President Middleton, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey,
No.
Conway.
There was a no for Councilman Dorsey.
Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved.
21-0168, tax credit, historic properties application extension. Vice President Middleton, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Let the record reflect the no vote for Councilman Dorsey. But this bill is approved.
21-0169, high-performance newly constructed dwellings tax credit application extension. Vice President Middleton, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
And let the record reflect the no vote for Councilman Dorsey. But again, this bill is approved. Members, the clearing of the bill status list can be found on Page 8 of the agenda. If you see an ordinance or resolution on the list you would like to keep active in committee, please notify Natwana Austin before December 9th. That's before Thursday's council meeting. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. There are no announcements for Economic and Community Development. And next would be Education, Workforce, and Youth.
No announcements. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Health, Environment, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee actually has several bills, several announcements. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a work session on Wednesday, December 15th, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. on Resolution 21-0039R, Violence Against Women and Overlook Public Health Crisis. On Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m., the committee will hold a work session on Resolution 21-00, excuse me, 0003R, informational hearing, Baltimore's COVID-19 vaccination plan. On January 12th, 2022, at 10:01 a.m., the committee will hold a work session on Resolution 21-0052R, informational hearing, Baltimore City employees' safe transition to work after COVID-19. On Wednesday, January 19th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m., the committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 21-0075R, global warming solutions, carbon-neutral city. On Wednesday, February 9th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m., the committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 21-0079R, informational hearing, mold and housing. And finally, on February 9th, 2022, at 10:01 a.m., the committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 21-0064R, investigational hearing, urban farming. All of the meetings will be conducted virtually through WebEx. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. Public Safety and Government Operations. Chairman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. No announcements today.
Thank you. Rules and Legislative Oversight, Chairman Schleifer.
Madam Vice President, the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on EA 21-0073 on December 9th at 2:00 p.m. for Henry Mayo, member of the Licensing and Towing Services Board. We will also hold a hearing on EA 21-0071 on January 13th at 2:00 p.m. for Ramsey Harris, member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We will also hold a hearing on EA 21-0072 on January 13th at 2:01 p.m. for Matthew, C. Matthew Hill, member of Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We will also hold a hearing on EA 21-0075 on January 13th at 2:03 p.m. for Katherine Stokes, member of Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We will also be having a hearing on CC 21-0160 at 2:05 p.m. for the ordinance of building code Cool Roots. Thank you very much, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. And just checking for Councilman Costello for Ways and Means. I don't, I don't think he can speak, but.
It looks like this thing isn't working. Would you like me to make his announcement for him?
Yes. Go ahead, Chairman Schleifer.
Yeah, the Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Bill Number 21-0112 on Tuesday, December 14th, at 10:00 a.m. for reconvening a hearing that was held on October 19th, 2021, for the Charter Amendment, the Supplementary Criminal Apprehension and Conviction Fund. The Ways and Means Committee will also hold a hearing on the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission on Monday, January 31st, at 5:00 p.m. to be televised on Charm TV. Thank you very much, Madam Vice President.
Councilman, yes, you said January 31st, 2022. I want to mention it.
Yes. 2022 is the next January 31st. Thank you.
Yes, correct. Thank you, Chairman Schleifer, for reading Chairman Costello's committee announcements. He's having some technical difficulties. We move now to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized to make any regular announcements.
Madam Vice President, do you mind if I go back on one of the, one of the announcements?
Okay, we'll hold off on the regular. Is this the announcements for Ways and Means?
Oh, no, this is for the Rules and Legislative Oversight.
Okay.
So, one of the nominees that are previously on the agenda is going to be at a future hearing. And so, therefore, the bill number for EA 21-0075 that I announced is actually EA 21-0074. And that will be held on January 13th, 2022, at 2:03 p.m. And that's for Katherine Stokes, member of Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that correction. We all have to get used to now saying 2022 is right around the corner. Do we have any regular announcements from any council members? Hearing none, the next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Thursday, December 9th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now sadly 316 victims of homicide this year, the 1,250 Baltimoreans who have died from COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic, and of course, our continued opioid epidemic. There being no further business, this concludes the 23rd meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council. We'll now have a moment of silence. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.